Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August sixth meeting of those new politics planning board. Tonight, we have some administrative business to take care of, then we'll have two public hearings. And a few additional application reviews. So to start, I'd like to review the July sixteen minutes. Do they want to have any comments on those or changes to those?
Yeah, Rachel got me two corrections that I made.
Okay.
And they're in the one driver is corrected.
Great. In that case, I'd like to get a resolution approving the seven sixteen minutes.
Someone.
Second, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Next up, there's an item that we want, want to discuss about escrow accounts. So in the past, the village board, the treasurer has asked us to like make resolutions specifically closing all the escrow accounts. However, our director of planning has suggested that he have the responsibility of closing those individual accounts. Am I getting that right, Mike?
Yeah, so so in the past, because there was not a position like mine now, it was a clerical position previously. The court wanted a resolution from the board to close out the escrow accounts. But when I spoke to Nicole, she said, the board doesn't really know when they're done and when they're not done. And she and I are conferring back and forth on a daily basis. So to both of us, it makes sense that I'm just the one who says, yes, we've received all the invoices for this account, you know, for this application. Now we can close it. So that's simply what this resolution is. It's just to take the responsibility off of the board and to put it on me to close that piece.
Okay, thanks. Were there any questions on that? Any objections to doing that? All right. In that case, I'd like to get a motion to authorize the Director of Planning zoning vote enforcement to be responsible and make recommendations to the planning board for the administration establishment and closure of individual escrow accounts established for the funding of application consultant review.
So move second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next, we have the village board, local law, amending the portable housing law.
I can offer some explanation on this.
Yes, please.
So the village board had thought it was adopted, seeker was not properly done prior to their adopting the law. And so I spoke with the mayor. And then also they are required to refer anything involving land use to the Ulster County Planning Board and to this board, which also did not happen. So the public hearing has already happened and been closed. So they have backed the process up. You're doing the referrals. They established lead agency under seeker. They'll be voting at their next village board meeting to for a negative declaration because they are the only involved agency under seeker. And then the following meeting, once the comments from the county planning board and from this board, if there are any, are received. The change is simply the one sentence that any projects twenty-one units or greater will now be fifteen percent required for affordable housing. Whereas previously, everything was ten percent. So that's, that's the one sentence that's changing in the law.
Great. Thank you.
Have they gone through all these processes for the first iteration of a law at ten percent?
Ah, we didn't go back. I'm assuming they did. Yeah, it was just, it was they discussed, they had the public hearing, they discussed it, and for whatever reason, the seeker was neglected. So just to put the proper procedure on it. The mayor and I spoke, and so they're, they're backing it up. Once it's adopted, it will be filed with New York State as he said last meeting.
And it affects all the site plans that have been approved under the understanding that they were going to follow?
Um, that I don't know. That'll be up to them. What they will do when they adopt the law, they will set with that adoption in the resolution which projects it takes effect. I believe they're putting this for projects moving forward, not anything that's already been approved. So.
Yeah, I think the whole board is in support of the change of the language. I just, I do agree that it's a little ambiguous right now. It would be good to know.
Yeah. Well, if you want to make a recommendation one way or the other, that's sort of what this comment period is, is you can make a recommendation to them as to what you think the language should be, and they could certainly make any appropriate changes. So if you think it's, for example, the, the one one forty-five, I believe, North Chestnut and the other one there. They have gotten approval from this board, but they have not gone finished. They haven't secured building permits yet. So you can set it at, you know, anything that doesn't have building permit status, this could apply to, or you could say anything that has site plan approval or any new applications, whatever, you know, you think the wording should be. Emily can probably chime in better than we can.
Yeah, I mean, once someone has a vested right, then I think you have a problem, but that only occurs after they basically start building.
Shovel, yeah. So the building permit stage could be illogical, say that any, any application that is required that has not secured a building permit that this would apply to.
Are there, are there permits prior to the building permit? Do they have to get permits for foundations?
No, you have to get a permit, a building permit for a foundation.
So the building permit, they, they can't even put a shovel in the ground for a foundation in the ground.
Correct.
Until they have a building.
And neither one of those applications, to my knowledge, has signed site plans yet because they've gotten site plan approval from this board. They have an approved decision, but the plans aren't signed until certain conditions are met, and they are still in the process of finalizing those conditions.
So there's the site plan approval, then the actual signing of the site plan, and that's when you can get a building permit.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can they clear a lot without a building permit?
I don't know that answer. I don't believe so, but I don't.
Because it's not only one forty-five North Chestnut, it's also the two projects immediately south of that.
There's the one thirty.
I don't know the numbers.
Yeah, yeah.
One commonly called the Agway project, the other one commonly called the Rovers Gate project, the Rovers Gate Park project. Those two projects, I know they have approvals from this board. There's been no site work at all on the Rovers Gate. There has been Phil brought into the Amways. Did you bring Phil in without our comment?
Uh, all right. Yeah, I'm just not familiar enough with village law. Under state law, yes, you can.
Okay.
Under village law, I don't know.
Yeah, that's clearly material to this whole conversation. So.
But you could word it that, as Emily said, the shovel in the ground, which is, is, yeah.
Things happen before a shovel goes in the ground, is my point. Things happen. Lots get cleared, the law is brought in, other things happen.
But that's.
We want, we want this to take effect so that all three of those, all four of those projects on North Chestnut Street, I'm speaking on behalf of the Affordable Housing Board, don't leave me when I tell you. All four of those projects, we want them to be under this new.
Yeah. Well, Emily can speak to the vested rights.
I completely understand that. That's why I'm asking this.
Yeah, but I mean, a small amount of just bringing in Phil probably wouldn't trigger that. It has to be a substantial, you know, investment that's needed.
Okay, so in my opinion, all four of those projects would fall under this new, new ordinance. From the board's opinion, that is great.
Perhaps the better way to write, write the recommendation is use the word vested rights rather than building permit. And as, as she said, that, or however you want to.
Well.
I'll let Emily.
We'll let the attorney work that out. But certainly, my intent here is to have well, the small project, which is down across the street from Stewart's.
Right.
That would not fall under this because it's not twenty-one units. But the other three projects, one is sixty, one is sixty, one is one twenty. Do I just put that in the resolution and say, look, up, up, up to and including this one, this one, this one, and everything in the future?
Probably be better to state it as a, a rule and not specific project. So I think, you know, the, the until the construction commences maybe, or.
You, whatever language you think of the law.
You could also, if you want to, if the board wanted to authorize Emily to make those comments on your behalf, she can get them too, and then she can, she can do a little, a little research and then.
And here's the thing about all this project, this process of getting extraordinary steam, the devil's in the detail. The two projects that are sixty units each, rough. They have approval from us with the ten percent set aside. To the point where they even identified how many one bedrooms, two bedrooms are going to be part of it. That all needs to be redone. How they do that, they can come back here, they, but it needs to be redone. And somebody needs to tell them it needs to be redone.
And where would they go? Would they go to us or to the Affordable Housing Board?
No, they have no authority.
So it's up to them, that what they decide to do, it's going to be up to them now?
Well.
That extra five.
A little bit more clarity.
Yeah, so to backtrack, what you're doing at this point is you're making a recommendation to the village board. The village board, you know, if you have these questions, you might want to put them in your recommendation of we have these questions, and then the village board and their attorney will come, you know, I can't come up with the answers. Only they can come up with the answers to, and they, to be sort of full transparency, they could reject that and say, no, we're just going to move forward with new applications. Yeah, but I'm just but I think anything you want, any of these questions, you probably should include in these comments to the village board and to make sure that they're, you know, put into writing. So that'd be my recommendation, that you have Emily write these, and if she can get them to me by the end of the week, that would be great. By Friday, by the end of the summer.
So just to summarize, we're all in agreement at the board that we believe this law should apply to applications who have not received a building permit yet.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and then the question would be those applications that have site plan approval, would they have to come back to the planning board for amended?
I would, I would hope not, and I would think that they could just use the currently approved distribution of portable units, but yeah, I guess that's.
I mean, somebody else could have.
If you have a building inspector, it doesn't have to be us.
I agree.
Sure, I agree. It could be the village.
I have a quick comment that I was thinking about, about the NBR, since we've seen we've got some new people coming down to the NBR that want to build more housing with retail on the first floor. And as long as we're making some recommendations to the village board, this came up in my mind. I think we're really being overtaken by first floor retail, the upcoming projects, we already have first floor retail in the village, we zone for that, and the B two, and the B three, and the gateway, and all these areas. And I am noticing that we have some empty stores, and we're starting to run out of original ideas for services and shops in our village. And we really need housing. We have a lot of handicapped people that will be served better. People with disabilities and seniors that might prefer to live on the first floor. And I was thinking that it would be a great idea if the village board might want to consider moving forward to allow housing on first floor in NBR. Just an idea, we need housing. I don't really know how many more stores we need. It's really up to the retailers, obviously. But it's just my idea, and I just wanted to run it by the board.
We've brought that up before. I, it's up to the village board to change it.
Yeah.
Right, so I'm just putting the idea out there that since we're running on the note, maybe it's a good time to ask someone to think again, because now other things got approved, and now things are going to change.
Yeah, I would recommend that possibly you do that as a separate note, because it's not specifically like the affordable housing. But you can certainly send them a letter. If somebody either wants to draft something or even just give you something.
Interested in this type of.
I'm happy to draft it if you want to give some.
Is anybody interested in that, or you think that first floor retail is a good idea, who's in forward in the NBR?
I think I want to have some more discussion about it and think about it. One thing to note is that a lot, some of the first floor commercial in the new developments of professional offices and not retail.
Which we also have a lot of overabundance.
And I don't know, I don't know that. I don't have that data. So I know the, I do understand the spirit behind why, you know, brown court commercial or retail or professional was intended in NBR.
I understand it too.
And so I would want to give some more thought before I would sign on as a board position, but I think it's, it's a great point you're making. And if you wanted to draft that memo, I think.
I'd be happy to.
I think it would be something that could come.
I think we could open up a lot more apartments to our residents.
It could come from a member, even if it didn't come from the board.
Yeah.
Well.
All right.
Especially if you can get food and coffee, those are the things I need. We need more real food. No, I don't have any more pizza. That pizza, well.
Okay.
I'm kidding. Can I ask a question about the affordable housing and then that just about the way it's ordered? So this might be just ultra picky, but about partial, about fractions. So if, if it's ten units, then we would need one affordable unit, right, as ten percent? But if it's nine units, then you don't need any affordable units?
That's correct.
Okay, so it might be clearer to write ten to twenty instead of fewer than twenty, because I just, I think it's a little confusing. We've been rounding up, you know, like we've said, if you needed twelve or if you needed five, five point five affordable units, you'd have to put in six. So but under ten, we're not asking them to do any, right? So this might make it a little clearer.
Yeah.
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 You can add that as a, as a comment.
Yeah.
Just correct.
Mike, there's someone waiting.
Thank you. No problem.
Okay, so we have our comments to the village board. If that's.
Do you want to?
Everybody motion? Sure, I'd like to get a motion to send, authorize our attorney to send this comment back to the village board.
And can we clarify what our comment is?
Tell you what I wrote down. That we, we want projects off to the point of vested rights, which we're kind of interpreting as a building permit, but I'll, I'll kind of check on, on that, to be subject to the new law. Number two, that we would ask for clarification of which board does the calculations for the number of affordable units, whether it would need to come back to the planning board for that.
Yeah, and it's the calculation and the distribution of.
Yeah.
Shouldn't have to be a rural housing board. I don't understand why they aren't.
They, they seem to really just handle the placement of families into the units.
The ordinance is quite clear. We have no authority at all over that. That is the planning boards at bar. It's very clear.
So, I mean, if that's the case, then it would kind of have to come back to the planning.
Yeah, well, that's why we should ask the, the village, the village board attorney to, you know, since it's their local law to he can offer a suggestion about.
Yeah.
That answer.
And then the third thing is just changing it to ten to twenty units and not fewer than. Is that what the board wants?
Yeah, that sounds good. Okay, can I get a motion referring those comments to the village board?
So move.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next up, I'd like to talk about our public comment.
It's in your pocket, the attorney's pocket, because Rich sent it.
Very late.
Yes, but thank you for sending it.
For, okay. Putting that together, Rich, should we just, would we go through it?
Maybe I can just share the intention and give everybody a chance to read it before the next meeting.
Sure.
Digest it a little more, but, you know, my thought was that in the interest of, you know, continuing to provide every opportunity for a speaker to share their comments for a public hearing or for public comment at the meetings and, but also with that opportunity, also managing the time and length of meetings. You know, respecting the board and the applicant's kind of process, and also thinking about the idea that we're often registering a comment that is repeated multiple times by multiple speakers, but also repeated multiple times by a single speaker. And so just thinking about ways that we could try to organize our public comment, our public hearing of this. Because I think I understood that there isn't any guidelines for that in our code, but that guidelines for that exists in lots of other municipalities codes. And so Emily was kind enough to share a couple of examples of municipalities that have code or that have language in their code that provides guidance for public comments and public hearing. And I took a look at those couple of examples and integrated them into what I thought was most applicable for our board. And I shared those only today. Sorry about that. I meant to share it earlier. And my thought is that we could take a look at them on our own, or we could discuss them briefly if we wanted to now. And I don't know if that's something we adopt, or if we have to recommend it to the village board and be a part of our, of our meeting procedure. I'm not sure, but.
I think you can, your board can adopt.
Yeah, you're allowed to.
Yeah.
Policies and procedures of your board, you're allowed to adopt. So this would be one of those.
That's the intention, and that's what, that's the context.
Yeah, thank you. I didn't get a chance to read through it fully, but the only one question I had is if you think there should be different rules or different limits for public hearings versus public comment, just general public comment.
I think I, I, I think that the material that I recommended could be universally applied to both public comment and public here.
Correct.
I'm wondering if, if it could also apply to the applicants.
I don't know if that's, if these things really make sense in application review, because that's more of a discussion.
No, but I mean, during the public hearing, they shouldn't be allowed to go you know, behind the people.
Yeah, that's in there. No gestures, no clapping, no, no dialogue.
Was included in that.
Well, yes, they are.
Then it includes the audience.
That's rules of order of the meeting.
Yeah, and it's also particularly mentioned in this, these guidelines, because even rules of order in a meeting generally aren't necessarily followed. And what I think this also does is gives discretion to the chair to, to, you know, to interrupt and to request consideration during a time when someone is speaking too long, or someone is repeating something that they repeated in meetings before, or someone asked to approach a second time. These are all things that, you know, have been on the planning board some time through large and small projects that have had, you know, some real, that creates some real delays in an applicant's experience and in our own volunteer time because of some of these rules. And I think that time that we just take a little bit of control without suppressing voice and, and, and trying in any way to, to, to not be inclusive of all people to speak.
Something else you might want to consider, and I'm not advocating for or against it, but some boards put general public comment at the end, only because the board is here to, to do a legal process, and that's to review the applicants. Certainly, time limits will help shorten that public comment. But if it's held, or some put a fifteen minute maximum time on it or things like that. I'm just telling you examples, because a forty-five minute or an hour public comment about generalized topics can certainly puts a lot of burden on you guys to do the rest of your meeting.
And the other way people use public comment is if, if an application, if someone wants to comment on an application that's not having a public hearing that evening, they'll come in during public comment and, and speak about that application. And so, yeah, we could think about the position of public comment in the meeting. I, I recommend that.
Yeah, personally, I don't like that at all. I, I feel like to make the public sit through our entire meeting so that they can make a four minute comment is really not cool at all.
I'm just pointing out examples of what you can do.
And of course, submitting in writing, we had a very thoughtful couple submissions that we had prepared for this meeting. You know, that's encouraged as well, not, not again, not people being discouraged to speak, put your standards and guidelines.
Well, well, let me tell you. After going through many, many years of municipal governmental meetings, I agree with everything that you've written here, Rich, except for the time. I just, personally, I just don't think that I want to limit people's ability to say whatever they want to me. They, I mean, they don't have, they, they have no right to be rude. They have no right to do that, but to me, I don't think we should have time limits. That's just my thing. Whatever the board decides, you decide, that's fine. But you know, that's, you know, that's part of government. And I'm sorry if an applicant who comes before a public board at a public meeting is somehow feels like they're, they're being held up because the people who live here are making comments. There's no place for that in my mind. They've come before us. They've come before the citizens of this village. Let them have their say. If it takes two hours, if it takes three hours, I just think they should have their say. But all the other things I completely there's no need to be rude. There's no need to address people in the audience. All the comments should be directed to the chair and only the chair. That's just my opinion.
We have to have time limits, please, on the comments. I mean, I'm very, very in favor of public comment. But if we don't draw at five minutes or whatever, this could go on for hours with one person.
That's correct.
Comes to every meeting. And I personally am a volunteer, and I cannot stay here till one o'clock in the morning.
Okay.
Could you make people cede their time, you know, the way they do in the comments? Like if each person comes in, gets four minutes, and then they can give their four minutes to someone else.
We have to encourage, we have to encourage our, our, our residents to be concise and to be organized in their discussions with us.
And they're certainly more than willing to provide the full length comments in the report. I, I do agree that I, I think public comments should have a time limit, and I would be more open to having a longer limit in a public hearing when it's, you know, this is specifically focused on a application and period set aside for hearing all the public's reaction to that. So that would be my only suggestion, maybe a limit of five or six minutes for a public hearing on a specific application and three or four minutes for ten public.
In one comment I have just off the top of my head, and I would defer to Emily's opinion, but I vaguely remember that you cannot require somebody to give their name. You can ask them if they're willing to, but Emily can research that. I vaguely remember there was court precedents that said people can speak at a public comment without divulging their name, but that's just the legal answer, you know, to, to look into. I took, because of the word must, that's the only reason I jumped out of me.
Good point.
But I don't necessarily have the answer, so.
All right, well, are there any other initial reactions from board, any suggestions that we want to consider right now? If not, I would recommend us each reading through this, you know, before the next meeting and coming in with any specific changes so we could develop a, a final version we can adopt.
Okay.
Good. All right. So that's all. I'd like to move on to our updates from the village. So that's all. I'd like to move on to our updates from the village our village board and Ulster County Planning Board.
Yeah, Bill emailed right before the meeting and said he was going to be unable to be here, so.
Okay. So.
And he said, thank you for all of what you did.
Thank you. Moving on, any updates from the environmental policy board?
I don't have any, but I didn't go to the meeting, so.
Okay. And how about the town planning?
The town planning board has no updates because the last meeting was canceled.
Thank you. Lastly, any updates from our director of planning zoning and code enforcement?
Just one that I received, the red line version of the Newport apartments F P I S this morning. It's a large, large file they kept emailing. It's in the Google Drive under the Newport apartments. I also emailed all of you, I forwarded you the link that they sent to me. I'm presuming that if you have that link, you can directly get it from their site if you choose to, but it is in the in the OneDrive. And they did a red line version, as was requested, that shows all the changes. And they also did a separate letter where they addressed the comments that the board members made point by point. So they are scheduled to be on our agenda next meeting. So if you can review them between now and then. And so that's where we are. That's the only update I have.
Great. Thank you. So next, I'd like to open the public comment section. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to make a general public comment, not about one of the two applications that have their public hearing scheduled? Okay, anyone online?
There's two people online. Does anyone wish to speak? If you could either raise your hand or unmute yourself? Here's not.
All right. In that case, we'll move on to our first public hearing.
I've got the signed sheets over here. It's that. One person found it for each.
Okay. Could I get a motion to open the public hearing for P B twenty-four oh one, three B Church Street?
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Would anyone like to make a comment on three B Church Street?
It is Myra, is it Smorin?
Okay.
Oh, please come up to the table if you don't mind. Yeah, thank you.
I'm here as a public citizen, not a representative of the Jewish congregation, the Gospel of Us. I am a member of the congregation, but I've not had the opportunity to meet them. There's a proposal for a bar across the street from the synagogue. And my understanding that is that it's illegal. I have the law here to have a place serving alcohol within two hundred feet of a house of worship. And the synagogue, synagogue, of course, is a house of worship, just like a church. And I haven't gone out and measured it. But it's if you know the location, it's by Bonner's book across the street. And then you go down a hill a little bit, and the entrance to that location is right there. So I would say it's what? Four to six car lengths. A car length is what, ten feet, twelve feet, twelve, mostly one hundred and twenty feet? So I think that that should eliminate it automatically. Would you agree with that? I mean, that that takes it out. They cannot have a bar there.
They they received a variance, so that's why they're allowed to open.
Okay, the zoning board gave them a variance.
The zoning what?
The zoning board. The the village zoning board gave them a variance already.
I don't believe that the synagogue was notified that there was a proposal. And I think either tradition or ethics or law should require that they be notified. The same thing happened twice in the past. I wasn't on board at one of those times. When Appleberry Place down Church Street applied, and then went the place that was previously in this location of law. And we tried to fight the previous location, but we couldn't because it applied as a farm store. It was selling goods from their farm, which was, I think, in that quarter. It included, I don't know.
It included beer.
It included beer. And they served beer as well. So they got in, we applaud, we we asked the state to change it. They said we can't. It's illegal. Possibility for them to be there. So we we had met with, I don't remember at which point. But they agreed to certain accommodations. They said they would not be open later than, I don't, something like nine or ten o'clock. Taverns can say open till what, three in the morning in Newport? They agreed that they would try to keep the noise levels down, things like that. They were very good. And we didn't have any problems with that. But I see a bar tavern as something very different. I see it as serving alcohol to anybody who comes in. They can leave the premises, walk around. And as a synagogue, we states, we are very worried, the the congregation. We have security anytime we have a big event. And the whole United States is really suffering an increase in anti-sympathetic language attacks. You know. So I personally think it would be a really bad idea to have a bar that close to our side. Okay. What else? Oh, the letter that the president of the board sent, he sent it to me because I raised this issue with him. Says that when they try to be good neighbors. And I think that's a nice thing. The owner of the bar would could maybe be a good neighbor. But what about the patrons of the bar? They could be students. They could be people from out of town. They could be people looking for trouble. They could be nice people who get drunk and then they lose their inhibitions and they see a synagogue and they swivel on it, break something, or they do it to other things in that it to the, as a synagogue, I I am very frightened by that. Okay, what else? But I I have a question. If if a variance was granted for this bar to be there. But it's against the law. The state law. Can it be there?
Can I can I clarify that?
Sure.
So there are two different laws that we might be talking about. The village code requires that a bar tavern cannot be located within five hundred feet of a school or church. And that is the code that the Z B A was giving a variance from. The state law is separate, and that would that would be the the state agency that provides the license. They would have to get the distance.
I have to volunteer if you want.
Well, it's it's just not something that this board gets involved with because it's the state, the state liquor authority, I think, that issues those licenses. They would need to confirm whether, you know, whether their code is not.
So the business should contact the state and find out if it's legal.
They would need to do that to get their liquor license. Yeah. Yeah.
Before they could gain a certificate of occupancy for a bar tavern from the from the building department. That's one of the accomplishments. The the planning board is only reviewing the ability to do the use. They still have to secure the state permit. So if that is indeed the state law, they could potentially be denied from the state. And even though they have approval from this board, they couldn't do it back. I'm just saying that's a possibility.
Yeah, it would be useful for them to know that.
Well, that would be in their application.
Okay. Okay, I think oh, the the letter from our president also said we love to, we want to encourage businesses, local businesses and people. And I'm not against that. I'm just against this particular. And I think that's
Thank you.
So thank you. Thinking of all.
Thanks. Sorry to hear you're so scared.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry that you're scared.
Yes, I'm sorry for this happens in our country. Thank you.
But nothing bad happened to you when there was a bar there before.
Well, it wasn't a bar. It was a farm store.
Oh, I'm sorry. I shouldn't do this.
Now, do you know, do you see the difference? It was just beer and it was limited apps.
I think the applicant will, you know, come up soon. They will be able to respond to some of your concerns.
Okay, so what happens now?
The the applicant will be coming up and we'll be asking them questions.
Oh, I see.
We do the public hearings first, and then we do the application.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just, Mr. Chairman, just to note for the record that we also received a written comment from Scott Minthoff, his congregation, and that's part of the record, so.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here that would like to make a public comment on this application? Three B Church Street? Thanks. Seeing none, could I get a motion to close the public hearing for P B twenty-four oh one?
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, could I get a motion to open the public hearing for P B twenty-four dash thirteen, eleven Water Street?
So who?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is anyone here tonight to make a comment on eleven Water?
There's one person signed up, Vincent Veriano.
I will go on that. That I heard your your discussion on public comments. I will tend to be brief. I was here earlier in the year on this subject. My friend, they are repeats, but it's just follow up, so. It's two two parts of what I had brought up before, one which I learned from another public comment, which was the overflowing sewage right up front on rainy days. So I had to be going by earlier this year. I can view this picture. This shows the a colored version of this stuff coming out of the ground there. I have a video. I have no idea if you want to. Thing, but you know, it.
You can email that to the board if you want to. You can email it to us.
Oh, okay. Great. But obviously, you know, it's it wasn't just like a little hoop. It was flowing right out of there. And I understand that's going to be exacerbated by the hotel. It's a fundamental issue. Spewage of the sewage, I've named it even so there. And I think it's a foundational issue that really needs a solution before we proceed and add more toxic waste into the river. So that's all I'm going to say about that. The other thing that my wife and I are discussing, the traffic study was determined to be an A road now, and it's going to be A afterwards. It's as good as it can get, I guess. No, no impact. I did look at the site plan. I noticed the road is being reduced from fifty-one feet to twenty-nine and a half feet at one point, right as you exit Water Street. Plains Road and come into the intersection. There's eighty families that down that area that we pass that by every day. I'm not sure where you guys live, but it's it's a contentious, contentious sort of intersection, which you've heard many comments about. The site plan does not have the parking lot for the apartment complex across the street on it, which is another traffic source, if you will. So I guess really you know, the the thing I want to point out, and maybe I mentioned this already, and I apologize. People leaving Water Street Market pretty much ignore the stop sign there. They come out of there on a blind curb, which will still exist coming up the hill from here. The rail trail crosses there with people, et cetera. If we now add twenty-eight cars arriving, and it's now an increase of rooms, I understand twenty-eight cars arriving and departing midday on weekends into this, you know, it's really where it hits Main Street, where it starts getting backed up. And I'd like to invite you to come and try to come through that intersection on the weekend and make a left turn and head out towards the hiking areas. It's really difficult. So just something to consider. I I would I would love to recommend an independent traffic study, not developed by the paper by the developer, to check whether there's really an impact there. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you.
Enjoyed the shopping.
Yeah. Do you have that photo?
Yeah. Is the planning board, where do you know the?
It's planning, planning zone at Village of the Falls.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And your volunteer service.
Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment on eleven Water Street? Okay. Seeing none, I'd like to get a motion to close the public hearing for P B twenty-four dash thirteen, eleven Water Street.
Oh.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So now for our first application view, I'd like to call up P B twenty-four oh one, three B Church Street.
Are we sure nobody would want to comment? Probably soon.
Two people that are on the line. Do either of you wish to comment on the eleven Water Street?
Howdy. Hello. I guess my first question is if you got a chance to look at the the letter from the Jewish congregation and.
That, I don't know who it was sent.
I may not have got here. Here's a copy. Sure, make that. So apologies.
And also, if there's anything that you'd like to respond to from the public hearing, you know, maybe misunderstandings you'd like to correct?
I mean, of course, we we intend to be, you know, respectful to all of our neighbors, thoughtful.
Please address the board.
And we we don't intend to do anything yet to disturb the neighborhood noise-wise, public, volume-wise. You know, we're not looking to do hard alcohol, which is, you know, there there's there are bars and restaurants in the neighborhood in in block radius that has, you know, there there is Appleberry, there is alcohol and bars around. We're looking to do a local tasting room sorts with beer, wine, and cider.
And we're looking to do some food as well and
so cafe kind of.
Cafe kind of vibe with clothing. So it's not just focusing on the alcohol.
Yes, it's like a boutique cafe, and then we're looking to add some alcohol to it. And the source, yeah, in in terms of beer, wine, and cider. And then we're not looking to be open late night, every night sort of a thing.
What are your hours?
Our hours are noon till eight on Fridays till Monday, so kind of a weekend thing. We close at eight, eight P M. Yeah, we're, I mean, we're looking to copy sort of the kind of vibe that our, that the previous tenants in the states had.
We close at eight P M every night?
Yes. And then we're we're closed, what, three, three days weeks?
Tuesday, Wednesday, we're closed.
Yeah, so. We're not looking to to cause any more disruption to the neighborhood as as the previous tenant would have. So.
I mean, we we do try to stay open till two A M on Friday, Saturday nights.
Yeah.
That's only Friday.
We're we're, you know, looking at doing something like that.
And just to remind the board how, like, what, how many approximate visitors or what's the like maximum occupancy?
Oh, it's very normal, yeah.
Small space, so.
What was the bosom size?
It's thirty. Thirty.
I think it was thirty.
Thirty or so people.
So it's a very young amount of people and very going to be contained.
We're not doing music outdoors.
So there'll be no music outside at all? No music outside?
No music outside. We're not serving hard liquor.
Yeah, just beer and wine.
Yeah, and there's a large retail portion of what we're doing too. There is clothing that we're selling. We're going to be selling, you know, we do have a cafe, food program.
So that means that people who are under the age of twenty-one can come into your establishment?
Currently, yes, and we don't have.
If you were to have the liquor license? If you were to have the liquor license, would that mean that you would only allow twenty one and up in your place, or would you allow?
It's, well, it's not just gonna be a bar tavern, um it is, it is a boutique and a cafe. Along with, we're looking to a, add some beer, wine and cider in the mix.
So it'd be kind of like a brewery. Where it's like all ages, but if you order in, then we'd item.
The reason it got clarified, classified, excuse me, as the bar tavern is because of the wanting to stay open past midnight. Which is the, the village law criteria. So if they were just being a, a, a cafe, they could serve alcohol. But they would not be able to open past midnight.
I think it also had to do with the number of seats. But just to note that the outdoor cafe regulations say it can only, the outdoor cafe can only operate till nine P M. So inside might be open later, but the outdoor part would close nine.
Yeah, so there, there wouldn't be any issues with um people being outside.
So um I recall the, in either the last or the prior conversation about this application, we did bring up some. Considerations around um potentially some parameters we might request to be included in the resolution as specific conditions. That we were thoughtful about given. Uh, we didn't specifically discuss the um House of Worship, but we also talked about. That there's residential neighbors, it was super close and that it's a, it's an application that. Need to achieve a, uh need to obtain a um. Uh, a variance in order to locate in that, in that location. So uh, and I think it was, it wasn't necessarily voted on, it was sort of. Moved forward and said, no, let's not impose, impose anything specific around their issues after meeting.
Well, we, we did have some specific conditions in that resolution.
As it turned out, the things that you all uh discussed at the last meeting were the same specific conditions that were in the previous. Uh, well, no, in, in, in the Star Chappelle's previous resolution, which was that the outdoor cafe. Would close by nine P M as per the code and that there would be no outdoor music performance. That's what I picked up from the minutes, I wasn't here for this.
So they, so the specific condition, the first condition says the applicant allows the addition of. As part of a previously approved site plan and special use permit, that's referring to their original clothing fail.
No, they're outdoor cafe.
We, we've gone multiple.
Yeah, it, it's referring to both, it, it's listed earlier in the resolution, but it's referring to the Arrowhead site plan. And the special use permit for the cafe, for their cafe.
Okay, so does anyone remember what those specific conditions?
Two were the same that I, I texted back in here, which were. The outdoor cafe has to close by nine P M and there's no outdoor music performance.
Do we want to include besides the performance, do we want to include um recorded music and that is what?
I didn't think we.
They just said that they don't want to play any music outside at all.
You did have that discussion last meeting, but it was left as just performance, just, just as a reminder, I'm not saying that.
Yeah.
One way or the other, but there, I remember there was a discussion and Rich actually what, what you were saying is. And what Emily said, those two conditions were asked to be put in, in for specific conditions. But as Emily said, they were already existing in their approval for the outdoor cafe, so you don't need to reiterate them a second time. Yeah, unless you want to add and change it and save recordings.
I, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm opposed to that, I don't. The Arrowwood uh establishment was able to be open until two A M?
They were a farm brewery, which has a whole different set of standards.
Yeah.
So I'm trying to understand. Excuse me, I was trying to finish my clarification before, before I can contribute to the conversation, so the, the, and the, the specific condition number one. Is that referring to when you, when it says the previously approved site plan and special use permit? That's the site plan and special use permit for this applicant's business or for the prior occupants' business?
Both, so they, they don't have a separate site plan, they use the site plan from Arrowhead. But the special use permit was for their business. So you're, are, are you asking, and I think you're asking a good question, should we look back at the site plan conditions for Arrowhead?
I just want to first confirm what conditions we are imposing based on the resolution we have before us, that's what I'm trying to confirm. And then, cause then it says except for the addition of bar tavern use, which is a pretty significant addition, the previous plan and approvals for the site remain unchanged. So I'm just trying to understand what are the conditions that are, and, and if, and if you're saying that that number one refers to number two and three. Then I have clarity, if it's number one refers to things other than two and three. Then I don't, I don't know by memory what those things are.
Do you have the decision?
Yeah, um, it, it doesn't look to me like it had, it was a site plan, so it would not be unusual that it didn't have. Special conditions.
Well, I mean, Rich, are you, are you now? Questioning? The actual like. Terms of the bar tavern use in, in wanting to re- review. All the rules around that use?
Uh, what I'm trying to understand is um. What limitations we put on them by virtue of the currently drafted resolution? No, I'm not questioning the bar tavern use, I'm, I'm question, I'm, I'm asking what it is we've done to, if anything, to. Change or restrict what their rights are.
Okay, I can tell you what was in the um, the Arrowhead original resolution. They need to submit a final site plan um. Something about the stairwell dimensions, so these are physical things, um the liquor authority license. Okay, the rear ADA access shall remain safe and free of snow and ice. And that's the only, that's it.
And then what about the uh?
And for the special use permit, it was exactly these two things, that the outdoor cafe must close by nine and no outdoor music performance.
So under the, under the uh resolution is written. For example, they could have audible music during the congregations. Holiday or, or, or service. Um, and just finding, and, and I'm just bringing up, what are the, what are the issues of conflict we're seeing here between the community?
But, but they already said they don't want to do that.
I don't know, I'm, I'm, I don't think they said they don't want to do that.
They said, they already said they're not gonna have any music outside.
Is that, you guys say that?
I mean, we're happy to know. No, there, there aren't neighboring businesses that do that, but we're, we don't have plans to do that also. We're happy to, that is to be put in writing, but.
Yeah, I don't.
Let's not, you know, our, our intention, playing music outdoors.
Yeah, that's really considerate.
Plus, Bolas has a band all the time, so you'll just be, wear the bands.
Uh, I, I, I mean. Is the rest of the board uh in favor of that or? Do they think it's necessary?
I like to, I like to um. Make a motion to um not allow any music outside and the applicant has already offered that. So if the board's on board, maybe we should just take a quick vote.
Okay, sure, we can, we can. Vote on amending this uh specific condition to. Say no approval granted for.
Remove the word performance.
I would second that motion. All right, all in favor? And all opposed, I'm opposed, but. Looks like. In that case, it is.
You were, you were opposed?
Yeah.
Okay, and everybody else was aye? Okay, thank you.
So. Let's just uh remove that uh word then and. Were there any other? Specific conditions that was thing? Needed, okay, and you. You both have, have gotten a chance to read these and understand what the uh. Resolution of approval says. So I, I'd like to just quickly read through this specific conditions as we. We will be approving them, so. Uh, number one, this approval allows the addition of a bar tavern use alcohol service. As part of a previously approved site plan and special use permit. Except for the addition of the bar tavern use, the previous plans and approvals for the site remain unchanged. Number two, as stated in the previous approval, the outdoor cafe must maintain compliance with the standards and two twelve dash forty one Jags. Including but not limited to quota by nine P M. Number three, there's been no approval granted for outdoor music.
Other question, um since the applicant has already said that they will not be serving hard liquor. And that they will only be serving beer, wine and cider, um perhaps we could put that in our resolution. Otherwise, we open it up to another, they leave and another bar comes and they, they sell shots there and it should be a whole other type of a bar.
Wouldn't they just want to put? From the men's phones and will create. It's found me personally between, they've already said that, that they don't serve hard alcohol. There's a big difference between a, a cafe that serves wine and beer and a bar that serves hard alcohol.
Can I ask a question? If you grant a special use permit. Does that have to be approved separately like to Amy's question, like? They leave, somebody else comes in, they have to get their own especially, there, there is a continual renewal of special use.
It's not specific to the owner. So, I mean, if it were a very different business, then it might need a different permit, but um, yeah.
I can speak Amy's comment, I'm not personally focused on what type of alcohol is being served and think that has an implication.
That's the reason I bring it up.
I, 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 yeah, I understand, and that, that's not something that I. I think that um, that's not as much of a concern for me as, as having um, as it is the issue you've already addressed, so just. That's my, my perspective.
Yeah, I agree that, that. I, I don't think that's a big concern considering there are numerous other establishments on that street that also. Serve alcohol. Serve hard alcohol. I do think it, it would be excellent if you had a communication with the synagogue and, and you know. Made some uh. Affordances for the high hall, holidays and. You know.
Does he have their count, their calendar?
Yeah. Exactly.
Yeah, they laid it out pretty specifically in there.
Okay, so if there, there are no. Additional specific conditions that the board wants to add, I'd like to move on to. The approval, so. Uh, I'd like to get a motion to. Approve PB uh twenty four oh one, three B Church Street with the given special conditions.
As amended.
As amended. And could we have a roll call vote please?
Uh, Rachel?
Amy?
Hi.
Rich?
Aye.
Terry?
Aye.
Aye. And so now you have your approval and um. Well, I wish you all the best.
Congratulations.
Thank you, yes. Uh, we have a copy here, oh, great, so we'll get that signed and then.
Yeah, I'll make that one change that we just made and that works, I'll get, so by the end of the week, I should have a copy for you. And then I may, I may possibly need an additional copy of your site plan because we'll have to summon this. Cause we've signed the others for the other use, so I'll, I'll check what I have still in the records and I need a couple.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Next up, can we have PB twenty four thirteen, eleven Water Street?
No?
Hello?
First, so we've seen my.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, is, is the user. Apologies. Thanks, I appreciate that.
Is it okay if I address the public comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
I wrote down a couple of notes and. So um. During uh, what, I'll address the first comment that he made about the sewer um. Issue and during. Our project review, sewer issue was raised. Um, in the first public hearing by our immediate neighbor Theresa Ball. Um, at that time, our group agreed to a monetary contribution to the current sewer upgrade project. We, we did, I just wanted to note that we did address that. And, and I think it's also as part of our resolution that we have to comply with that, with that agreement, so that. You know, before we even get started.
Not to mention the. Whole stormwater prevention's plan, right, and their, oh yeah, infrastructure upgrades, correct? I mean, do you think it's safe to say that it will improve the drainage in that area immensely?
Yeah, because it's right now, it's. But it's all run off, it's all run off, there's, it's not being caught. Or, a- any of that stormwater is not being caught anywhere.
And, and I think we also know um the building mirror and share that uh. The origin of the issue of uh overflowing sewage or wastewater. Is uh from infiltration and inflow from properties and, and lands well above uh the existing property, so. I don't think it was ever, it was ever a concern that the proposed property is gonna, the contribution to the system of the proposed property. Was ever gonna exacerbate that issue, it's, it's an issue that takes place. Beginning as far as those uh. Uh, those lines begin for infiltration, that's the issue the building is trying to address for everyone.
Yes, especially, or you guys are currently working on grants for the, the cost of that, of that project.
Yeah.
So, yes.
It's a perfectly valid issue to raise and it's been raised and I appreciate it being raised again, um so I think the contribution. And also, you know, again, just understanding the origins of that issue is, is really important.
Yeah. That is the fact that. We are, you know, our living roof um also kind of contains some of that stormwater as well. And the landscaping around, where there's no real landscaping now and then all of the underground uh um stormwater retention will. Will, will also. Um, or certainly not exacerbated like it is upstream. Um, and then um the traffic study, I'd like to also address that comment, um the traffic study was paid for by us, that was correct. But the village's engineer was tasked with the review of our study by the board. I would also like to point out. That being the new building will be set back, the sightline. Uh, will be much wider than they are now for vehicular traffic as well as cyclists and pedestrians.
Okay, um and did you get a chance to review the uh resolution of approval?
Uh, so our attorney did and he was okay with it, I'm okay with it.
Okay.
Yes, please.
Well, the board, board, uh well, do the board have any other questions for that?
I just want to double make sure, this, you don't have it depicted on the illustration there. The uh outflow um to.
The uh outflow um to the stream that that comes into the river. Right at the edge of your property, that's going to remain uncovered for actually.
Correct.
Okay.
You're talking about the open culver area, yeah, no, we have no intention of cover. Um, so that's all I'd like to just uh read through the specific conditions of the resolution approval before we vote. Um, number one, all conditions, the previous approval for application PB twenty two dash ten are incorporated herein. By reference and remain in full course.
But there were a lot of those, and one of them, sorry to interrupt, but one of them was that fifty thousand dollar contribution, so that always stays.
Yeah, yeah. Um, number two, the only change to the previous approval is the removal of the restaurant and event space. In addition of two guest rooms as depicted on the plans referenced above. Number three, as noted in the previous approval, the parking lot has been designated. Designed with thirty spaces with the opportunity to convert part of the unloading area. To an additional parking space if necessary for a total of thirty one spaces. If the applicant determines that additional parking spaces needed in the future. Space currently designated as part of the unloading area may be converted. To a parking space upon approval by the building inspector without further planning board review. Um. So uh that I'd like to get motion to uh approve. PB twenty four thirteen eleven Water Street uh. With the given specific conditions. So.
Second.
Again, um, and can we have another roll call vote please?
Sure, Rachel.
Uh.
Amy.
I.
Rich.
I.
Terry.
I.
I. So, uh, well done, we need to get you to sign, not be shortly. Thank you. Uh, thank you all for your time, appreciate it. Um, next, we have PB twenty four dash fourteen twenty five Cooper Street. That is. Yeah. Well.
Here's a copy, you can just double check that I made the corrections that you sent us correctly.
Okay.
I think I did.
Finally. Does the resolution of approval have to also include Jacob Lawrence and Richard Webb or just me?
That's, that's a question, the resolution, she's the applicant, so do all three. All three. Okay.
Okay.
I don't know.
Okay.
There's too much.
That's okay.
Sorry for the miss though.
No, 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 that's okay, I just, and then, yeah, I was like, wait, one read.
Yeah, I wasn't sure on the.
Can you know, I'm a.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, yeah, I think that's rich.
Yeah, so there's one. One change to be made.
Yeah, the the uh on the.
See the like the bottom.
Yeah.
Right.
Instead of. Instead of just saying the site plan approval, instead of just saying Madeline's name, it'll say all three names.
Okay. Uh. Well, uh, does the board have any questions on the resolution?
Um, well. Since the last meeting, I I did a little bit of research. Uh, after some comments were made about asphalt being the right thing, that's, it's easier to repair and neighbors have it and um. I looked it up and, you know. The life of asphalt roadways, thirty five years, for gravel, it's a hundred years. And you're in a way with a big sort of three free spa cycle, this is a wet area, so it's going to need, you know, recurring repairs. Regardless of what material you've used. Um, but to repair gravel, you just need a shovel and some more gravel, maybe a rake. To repair asphalt, need a chisel, straight edges, rocks and sand. Then you have to put cold asphalt in it, and you need some kind of a machine to flatten it down. And uh, and then if you wanted to match your, you know, if you want a shiny coat on top. And that's another thing, so I would reconsider, you know, just in the long run, um. And, you know, just because your neighbors are doing it doesn't mean it's right. You have the right to do it, and you're not still not be the right thing, even though you have a right. And also, half of your neighbors are human, but the other half, those are deer, edge predators. If you become very, very lucky, beavers might move in there. And so uh I will just consider them as well. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, um. Anything else, um? Not like to just go through the specific conditions uh we have here before we vote on the resolution. Um. Number one, this approval is an amendment to the site plans for twenty and twenty two Cooper Street. To add a driveway along the property line to access one ten Prospect Street. Except for the addition of the driveway, the previous plans and approvals for the subject lots remain unchanged. Number two, this planning board has no jurisdiction over the parcel known as one ten Prospect Street, which lies in its name of New Falls. Accordingly, this resolution grants no re or approvals with regard to that parcel. This approval pertains only for the driveway across twenty two Cooper Street to access one ten Prospect Street. Um. So I'd like to get a motion uh proving PB twenty four dash fourteen uh twenty two. Twenty twenty two Cooper Street with the uh stated specific conditions, so. Second.
Second.
And and could we have a roll call vote?
Sure, Rachel.
Um, I'm gonna say name because I feel strongly about driveway. I know it's not gonna make any difference.
Hey, Amy.
I.
Rich.
I.
Terry.
I.
Zach.
I. I know, alright, so. That is, and we'll let you go sign the copy in.
Congratulations. Uh, so it will be their fifth in this one?
Yeah, I made that one correction and then we'll have Zach sign it, so by the end of the week, I should have it. I can email to you for the few need to, if you want to pick up a printed copy.
Let me know.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, you can, you can keep that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. The only change, I mean, the other names will be added.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have PB twenty four oh three, twenty seven, twenty nine Main Street.
Well. Hello, John Joseph, um. You know, since we were here last. We added, um, as per the conversation with the traffic engineers. The do I enter in one way on pavement? Actually, the only change, I know it was sent to the DOT and it was sent to um county planning. Yeah, what county planning, let's be clear tomorrow night, spread out the response from now. I'm not going to get issue of response, so.
Um. Yeah, uh, Mike, could you just explain the DOT's response briefly?
Yes, so surprisingly, and I was as confused as everybody else was, apparently from the light. The traffic light to the bridge, even though it is Route two ninety nine, which is a state highway. It is under the jurisdiction according to the DOT of the new place. And then. From the bridge. And they don't clarify this, but according to our fire inspector, who is the uh assistant fire chief. Uh, the rest of two ninety nine to Route forty four fifty five is actually a county. Which is totally against the norm, normally if it is a a state road, it is managed by the DOT. So the letter we got back from DOT, which I put in the folder, stated that they have no jurisdiction over this one.
Okay.
So when we referred it to them, they came back with that comment of. We don't have any comments because we have no jurisdiction. Um, so, all that is submitted to the county planning board, which will, as as uh, as you just said, will be reviewing tomorrow night. And they normally turn referrals around in about a week, so by next meeting, we should, by midweek next week, we should have.
Okay. Thank you. Um. So I reviewed the site plan, I mean, it seems like most things we talked about are in it, is there any? Mention of the basement tenant in this site plan?
That was very odd, I don't have. So.
Okay.
Like, but.
Is that even possible?
You want one in the future?
Oh.
I mean, I don't, look, it it's a very limited pool that would have any interest. Uh, as I sit here today, the space is half finished, half raw. Um, it's in very bad condition, so what they would use is what I don't know, um.
Don't they have to be contaminated? Or like the basement, I don't even know if there's enough windows.
Now, it's not in the site plan.
Yeah, I don't think we need to.
Okay, so then i- if it's not on site plan, um. Yeah, I just, I I want to confirm that that you are, you have how many extra parking spaces and?
Well, there's seven extra parking spaces.
Okay.
Have them all.
Understood, um. I mean, at this point, I think, you know, we've. Gone back and forth enough, I I'm uh feeling like this should be opened up to public comment and we should get um. Public input on it and then at that next meeting, we also, you know, would get any uh feedback from the Ulster County Planning Board. Uh, and so the board can make a. Better determination at that point. Um.
So, I mean, I feel like it was brought up at every single meeting about the um. The. N B R, whatever, the gateway district. That the parking areas are to be cited behind the structure. And this is brought up over and over again, and it still keeps coming back with the. Green space and taking. And I just feel that. I don't understand why that can't just be resolved. Got the whole lot across the street, the crosswalks or whatever, but I just. I'm very uncomfortable with that on, and I feel like. We've brought it up each time and we should just.
Well.
You know, just leave the green space and let people park across the street.
I I don't think, uh, you know, the the application is going to change, and I think it's our, our duty as board to. Review it and then vote on it when after the process is is done, so.
But you you've seen the, you understand what, why we're asking for this and we know you you've seen the. Uh, yeah, I should have picked it up, it's.
It's the gateway design.
The gateway design standard, you've seen that, where it says.
I have.
Yeah.
And there's um a provision for the board and cannot be. Provided in the rear, so we're a hotel, there is no ability to do that, they parked outside and they screened it. So it's a very similar application and honestly, from a public safety standpoint, I think taking these four spaces that are on that odd corner, putting them in here. Is better than a public safety standard. Um, I do have seven extra spaces and I am willing to, in lieu of this area. Remove seven parking spaces over here, so um that I've just enough, and I'll just warehouse these. Because I don't know what the future use of the building is gonna be, but I'm hoping these guys stay forever and I never have to do anything. That's my plan, but it doesn't, may not always work out. So I'm willing, you know, in the lieu of the four, you're getting seven, so you're getting a much larger green area.
It's. I don't see why we couldn't have both.
I wouldn't reach for those.
Including all those spaces across the street?
There's a parking table that's clear, so you just have, you have to look back to see. Um. The 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 they would not count, um, there would not be sufficient parking, both were changed. Um, but, you know, the gateway standards couldn't be any more clear, um, it's not the case that you're unable to cite the parking in any other location. In fact, you have parking that exceeds the requirement. In the, in 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 the configuration that would include not having to change. Um, that space, the gateway code, uh, very specifically, I saw the memo, I went back and I read the memo that you'd written with regard to the gateway code. And I noticed that you excluded the elements of the gateway code that we're citing. Um, that make your proposal violation to the gateway code, you chose other comments from the gateway code. But the ones that didn't include was that it's intended, intention to have an attractive visual environment in and around the site. That all parking areas must be cited behind the structure and that when parking is visible from the street, a planting buffer must be established. Which, uh, in fact, because of the improvements you're looking to make on this combined plan. Um, I'm going to recommend that you also establish a planting buffer uh on Wards Road. Uh, across the street on the, what would be the west side of the apartments there. Because that would also be something that this board can recommend in compliance with the gateway standards. So the gateway standards are pretty, are are pretty specific about this. They don't provide for your ability to put those additional spots. And they're not required because they exceed the number of parking spots for the plan. Um, and I I think, Zach, if you think procedurally, you want to just move forward and and vote when we're prepared to vote, then I'm happy to that.
That's, uh, yeah, I thought that was the best course of action and the hearing, um. From the public at this time would also be valuable to, um. And also kind of finding board. Um. But. Yeah, I mean, I I agree with all your your points, Rich. Um, are there any other? Comments on the this uh revision?
I have a couple of comments.
Sure.
Uh, first of all, I just want to rehash something that I mentioned at another meeting. That I think that this developer is bringing a very valuable service to our community. Um, this is an investment in the well-being of our residents, having a walkable gym. We want to have a walkable downtown, part of having a walkable downtown is having a gym. Cutting down on traffic because residents who live within a mile or two of the gym can walk there and not have to take their call out. A lot of people who may be coming from over the mountain to work, they're not necessarily going to go to this gym. They're going to keep going and go to another gym with this morning pool, because honestly, if I was going to get in my car, I'd rather go to a gym with pools, personally. Um, I do have a couple of comments about the safety of parking lot, I live, um, just over near, I live a half a block from there, I live in eleven North Chestnut Street. So I'm walking through there almost every day, I don't take my car when I go to the post office or when I go to the liquor store. Um, or when I walk downtown, um, generally, I'm a walker. And I have noticed, um, first of all, for the last five or six years, we had a farmer's market. Right behind this project and that was, um. I think, um, hosted by the village, there was never any safety concern for the farmers or the families walking around in the parking lot. Um, we've never had an accident that I that I could find, um.
Uh, I I asked the police department the last five years.
So I didn't see anything, um, so I went over that, um, so that was one point I wanted to make. Um, another point about the green space, I like having green also, I think it's very important that we have green and flowers and. Keep our gateway and our downtown as beautiful as possible, but I do want to make a couple of comments about the picnic tables I've been noticing. Um, I walked by there a few times, I got pan handles. People asking you for money. Um, I noticed late at night I passed by there and there's a lot of overflow from the bar, people drinking. People smoking, and I'm not against smoking or drinking to the record. Um, but I don't think that's necessarily what we want to reflect in our downtown or why that, we have picnic table there, we put a picnic table there for. For the pandemic, so that people had a place to go. Um, so I don't really know what it's doing there now, I'm not really sure if I personally love the use of that space. Um, farmer's market, people will see, I think that the farmers, from what I understand, that farmers' markets moves now. Down to the fairgrounds and they're doing it over there.
Oh, really?
That's what I was told, um, and a lot of people, by the way, are upset about that because they have walked there.
Right.
And that was kind of the whole point, was to give people who don't have cars access. Um, so I'm a little upset about that personally, but that's such a subject. Um, and I also wanted to say that I think that John could. Bring in some more shrubbery and some nice planters and stuff into that parking area and really green it up, I think he's he's really good at that, you can see what he did. Bring in some more shrubbery and some nice planters and stuff into that parking area and really green it up. I think he's he's really good at that. You can see what he did in ShopRite. All the plantings all around the parking and I think he knows what to do.
It's a lot of trees there.
Yeah, I think he could do that in his parking lot and I think he could put some planters around if he wanted to and that might make people feel.
Which parking lot are you referring to?
All of them. Um especially the 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 one where we're gonna potentially take away the the green. So that was an idea I came up with, um. Anyway, I think it's a good a good thing for residents and I think for me at least, it outweighs any. Bad things about parking or losing all time a little piece of grass. I called Ignite Fitness, they have home for people. But. Ignite Fitness, it's not that much far throughout the hill, just. But you can't, you can't walk on the way up there if you live downtown in Eastwood. I do it all the time.
We we're this board is not. In a position to talk about competitive businesses and whether that makes sense.
Right, I'm just saying. I'm just talking about a walkable gym, that's all I said. Okay.
That's, I don't, I don't, yeah. I think neither of the comments is what this board is here to speak about.
Okay, well, thank you for for those, um makes sense, um. At this time, I'd like to get a motion to schedule a public hearing for our next meeting, August twentieth. If that is given, uh the applicant thinks they can get all the notices out.
You have, I'll get things out to you tomorrow. You may have to get notices mailed out and sign it by Saturday.
Yeah, very absolute for me, so if you could get me the list tomorrow.
We'll have it, you'll have it tomorrow.
Okay, and then I have to um. Post it in the window, right?
Yes.
Um. That's gonna be by Saturday.
By Saturday as well.
Okay.
It's gonna be ten days before the public hearing, so four days from today.
Okay.
Yeah. So by Saturday.
Okay. Okay, I think we made a deadline. How many individuals are there?
I don't know, I haven't pulled the list. It's everybody within two hundred feet of, and given that you're three parcels, it's probably gonna be. Cause I have to include all three parcels, cause they're all part of your site plan.
I, we did it for the Z V A. There wasn't that many on the list.
Yeah, there's big properties, so I I have no idea what the number.
Okay, yeah, let's get it to be on the other side.
Probably twenty. Twenty-five.
Okay.
Um alright, so they get a motion to schedule a public hearing for uh August twentieth.
So.
Second.
All in favor? And. Yeah, I mean, I think that's.
Just for my clarification, this this is already in fact two of the super, right? Sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, predicted me, I just wanted to be sure.
And I guess only wanted to ask one more clarification about the. Um. Land banking spots across the street, so you. Are not willing to. Permanently turn that into green space, only. Uh land bank them in case you need them in the future.
Correct, so what would happen is if the use of this building changes. And the change of that use requires the seven parking spaces.
Right.
Um. What I would do, and this is a resolution, but I would go to the Z V A and seek a variance. For the seven spaces. If the variance is benign. I can't lose the opportunity to rent the building. So that's why you land back them instead. And I and I change the use, I'll come back to the board. And the board can make the recommendation to the Z V A that they grant it. And then those seven spots will just. Stay green space, but I don't wanna restrict the potential use of the building.
So it's it's only. That issue would only arise if the use, change of use was happening, not. If you. You know, wanted to rent it to a new tenant, isn't that?
Well, no, so your. Use, your zoning requires different uses of different parking requirements. Okay, by the way, as I said, if I found to either one of the basement, they had two buildings, I mean, two spots. Now, I could easily just go to the Z V A. Request a variance. And I presume it would be granted and then I wouldn't need it to change anything. So that's really the purpose of it, you know, not so that we, it protects the future use of the building. And it really puts the illness on the planning board or the Z V A to grant the variance as. They see fit, if they think that the the use requires the parking, then they're not gonna grant variance and that would restrict the use of the building.
Okay, and Emily, do you think that's a reasonable thing we could say in special conditions that? That the applicant would. Have to apply for a variance before they.
I can think about that.
Yeah.
Yeah, because, you know, yeah, it's a public, yeah, we're worried about the risk.
Uh okay, yeah, I was just wondering if that was even something that could be. Uh alright. That's all for tonight, then.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um so let's leave the P B twenty-four O four, we want a street.
I do know I'm recused on this and I'll be leaving to the evening. Thank you.
I purposely put this at the end of the agenda, assuming that that would be the case.
Okay.
Since the ultimate is here and there's a refusal.
Thank you.
What you should do, Zach, is appoint Nikki. To replace Amy due to the refusal.
Okay, uh so I'd like to appoint Nikki to replace Amy uh due to her refusal.
And go ahead, bringing the right.
Uh good evening, so welcome, welcome back, um. Although, wondering if you could just start by telling us some of the some of the new changes, walking us through the the new site plan. Yeah, um essentially, what we're trying to do is just kinda bring some more detail from the planning board as requested. Um this isn't our first time in front of you for a site plan review, uh so what we really tried to do with the plan in front of you today is just check all of the boxes from the. Uh site plan and specialties permit checklist, um we think that we've added the appropriate details uh. To do the parking lot, uh we were looking to do the wooden planters, wheel stops and just bring some order to. Uh the current existing site. Um we had Alex signated a letter about the parking lot calculations that he came up with. Um and that determination was that we have ample parking for the proposed uses at the building. Um we've also included the site location of the dumpster, uh handicap parking, a loading zone on the Water Street side of the site.
And we considered uh some of the. The things that you guys are as and the other things about the gateway district and that obviously we can't. We don't have the ability to put parking behind this building, cause there's the river, so um providing wooden planters with. A diverse amount of vining plants that would sit towards the front of the green space. Creates a bit of a better aesthetic in the green wall when you're looking at space and looking towards parking lot while. Giving the backside that's facing on the inside of the parking lot, the ability to have a designated sign stating that it is parking either for. Uh the residential, the employee or the business. So just trying to. Create a structured plan for the parking lot that allows that green space to thrive as green space while keeping it. As structured as possible in the parking lot.
And then we we furthermore have the engineer that drew the site plan for approval, um we just kinda wanted to make sure that it was clear that we had proposed low height. Planting beds, um specifically so that we do not uh. Block the line of sight of traffic either entering or exiting the parking lot as well as uh people making a left turn from Main Street onto Water Street. So there was a specific line of sight consideration there, uh. You know, we're not gonna plant vining. Beans that are gonna grow ten feet tall, we're gonna keep everything low to the ground, um I believe uh some of the planning board members are aware, we're farmers. Uh professionally, uh we do commercial farming agriculture operations, so we do have a pretty big grasp about the kinds of plants. Uh and seasonal varieties that we'd like to include, um.
Basically, happy to provide a list if you guys want. I just wasn't sure if you wanted to see like fifty varieties, but I'm very happy to provide that list, uh. Basically devise a planting schedule that would require a pretty much an all season bloom, then with in the winter months, there would be. Green binary that would be able to be green throughout the winter, um the goal is to have. Uh planting within that green space that. Naturally blocks uh the the being able to cross horses people over to uh the rail trail crossing, um. But you know, keep some. U- unification in the forefront and try to have things that are within a rotational blooming period. Throughout spring, summer and fall.
And we think one of the unique features of this site is that it boasts uh more than twelve thousand square feet, square feet of green space. Uh that is pseudo-public, um it is a private property, but I think uh in its. Practical use, I do believe that it is very much. You know, open for residents and tourists to walk through, enjoy the arts sculptures that we maintain. Uh and also just. You know, there's a place for birds, bees. Squirrels and all the other things that live in that part of town. Woodjacks.
Okay, so so the. All the existing. Trees and art and stuff, you're. That's all staying, but you're just planting.
We're creating beds around each of the sculptures to essentially create a natural barrier from. A person walking through that space and being able to actually physically touch those sculptures and or do something on them. Creates just a little bit of a. A a separation.
Sure.
Um as renters, we haven't been granted the ability to. To do anything up.
Um, okay, and. I guess I need to just look back at the the zoning code and see what it says about the. The sculptures that. I'm not sure we have. Like, are they part of an approved site plan from now?
Before, and there was, there was no site plan.
Yeah.
Um and that was pre-established and we did talk to the building inspector, Alex, he did actually have to go back and look up a variance that was granted in the eighties for the usage. Um so there was a lot of gray area about uh this site in particular, the uses that were allowed. He did come up and get back to us and just make sure that it was clear that there are four uses. For the space, so it allows for the residential uh second floor as well as having the retail on the first floor.
That's two uses.
Uh office, mixed-use office, residential and retail involved in uh.
But residential can only be on that second floor.
And we cannot, we can, uh we cannot add residences since the current. Approved. Units.
Yes.
So the sculptures predate code is my understanding, the date on one of them is nineteen eighty-three.
I believe it's. Been added much more recently. Um and I think there is a question about whether those are. Allowed under the uh. You know, zoning code. Um so that's something I just. Would want to look into or or wanna talk to Alex.
I can check the logs. He did do a, based on the link site plan that was submitted and it's, and I apologize, I didn't, I don't think I sent it to you or maybe I did. But it's in the Google uh drive. Is a a new analysis of the parking. He did come out with more than you had, but he also said you had enough.
Yes, I think that was the determination is that we have.
I think we.
Yeah, I have one.
I couldn't remember if I did or didn't, he just did that.
Yeah.
When you set the new site.
Um and definitely send my regards to him for doing that, I really appreciate himself.
Well, I asked him to double check that the parking still match.
Right.
Yeah.
And so the the plan as proposed, uh the reason we wanted to do it this way is because uh essentially there is no grading, there is no leveling, there is no paving, there is no. Chasing to the site as it currently exists in order to accommodate the fifteen parking spaces as proposed. We did have the offer to uh, you know, go up to seventeen spaces, but it would require us to regrade to the two. Spots that are on the Water Street adjacent parallel parking. We don't necessarily like that idea, we think it would bring a lot of debris, trucks. Allow just unwanted activity on that corner during construction, so we just wanted to keep it as uh. Simple yet organized as we could possibly bring uh to the village.
However. The. Site plan describes a shale parking.
Correct.
That's, that's kind. Um. My untrained eye seems to say that that shale parking area basically drains into water.
Right, so the.
All the water. All the water from that parking lot. Is gonna go to that catch basin along with the shale. Along with the gravel into that. Into that man, into that catch base.
Has there been a complaint that has been graded prior to this about that?
Uh no, I'm bringing it up.
No, I I I know, I'm just.
Um and it's my understanding that the uh the twelve inch pipe that was installed here with the storm drain, that was the village. Uh that put that in after, I think there used to be a little bit of a problem with uh floodwaters backing up there. And I believe since the village put the storm drain in, um if there has been no.
But wouldn't this be the time that we improve that parking? Would, I mean, we're basically draining the gravel parking lot into the street. I. To me, this is the time to fix this. I mean. The other applicants who come for us with parking lots. They have stormwater plans, they have retention basins, they have. Uh all kinds of ways to keep the water from flowing into the village streets.
I don't think we've referred this to our engineer yet, but that might be a step back.
Or to B P W.
Yeah, it's okay.
Yeah, this is essentially, this is really almost the equivalent of the first meeting, cause everything you have. Preliminary was to get to the site plan, but now this is really the first. Look at the site plan, it's all the pieces being brought together into one place.
Okay.
So.
And not to put too fine. Point on it, but there is a handicap parking street, is there one over here on the west side of Water Street?
Yes, that is the intended proposed handicap parking spot.
And bike rack is located in the far back of the parking.
It is.
That's just the rail trail. Where the majority of the bikes would come in and we've watched them come out, yeah, yeah. We we fully support bicycling and.
Oh, I got it, I got, I missed that, my my mistake. Can I request, and I don't know if it's, it's a, it's a, I. I'm more, much more familiar with seeing the parking requirement in a table.
Right.
That is uh, you know, clearly laid out as as instead of the kind of narrative, um if that can be changed.
So if it would suffice, I would take the letter there from Alex, the building inspector, and I would put that in the parking table.
Mm-hmm.
In place of what we have proposed there.
And then I think when I count these, if these are all forward in spaces as I think they are, I count sixteen unless. I'm overcounting maybe some of the ones over here, including the handicap parking.
I mean, only the ones with the curb stops should be counted.
Yes, not planters, not curb stops.
Nine, ten, eleven, twelve.
I think you're correct, Rich, I believe with 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 the A D A space, I think it is sixteen.
Sixteen. And then we haven't had any engineers, look at this, I'm guessing someone who drew this plan. These, the parallel parking here, if you pull in, do you pull in here and then parallel park into that fourteen, this the space here? I don't think that's possible, you have, you have to nose into it, you know, just double check whether those can actually be parallel parking.
Right, somebody who who does this usually can do lines for you and say, oh wait, there's no way to back into that.
I'm only gonna.
And and can we just like clarify too for the record that the. The question again is, is there adequate parking, um you know, fifteen or sixteen spaces, I think. The building inspector's calculation showed that regardless of the.
Yeah.
Appropriate site plan, we we do have adequate parking.
We can.
Without making changes to these grading, leveling or the parking lot itself.
And the reason that's the case is because the size of the weeder is so small in terms of square foot. Um it requires very few spaces. Um. We don't have a lot of experience with the use. Um but that's actually a comment I wanted to to explore with the board. Um but anyway, sticking with this, let's get the right number of spaces that are in the plan right, and let's make sure each of those spaces works from a traffic engineer perspective.
Um so um. We do have a traffic study based on one of our uh previous resolutions, when we've requested a new traffic study.
Yeah.
Um so we do have the parking counts. Um so we do have the parking counts, parking, so they have the data for the traffic study. And our engineer will be able to provide a traffic study at a future meeting.
Yeah.
I'm gonna have to include the parallel parking.
The movements, that's what they would call them in a lot, just make sure those work for all the spots.
Got it.
It's it's potentially great, you would have in excess of the requirement, because we're not positive the the requirement is accurate for.
And we want to encourage uh students, veterans and other similar, uh everyone that is twenty-one and up is the requirement for state law. But essentially, we would like to encourage our patron, patrons to ride a bike, maybe there's an incentive program in our, in our uh dispensary that, you know, ride your bike in a. So we want to encourage pedestrian and bicycle traffic over vehicular traffic.
Yeah.
So the the thing I want to mention is that, um you know, we had uh a number of dispensary applicants um some time ago. Uh one of which eventually got approved and opened. Um and at that time, there's a lot of conversation and I contributed in the conversation about the concern of traffic. J- being um an issue because of uh what we all, what I experienced as a shopper. Uh going to places like Massachusetts and New Jersey with the the demand um for uh, you know, dispensary service. And I think that although we haven't done a retrospective study or we haven't done a real-life study. I think that what we've seen is a lot of the concerns we had for like the grand opening, creating a traffic jam all the way up to ninety-nine, just didn't happen. If this dispensary had opened in town. So I am glad that we requested a traffic study um of this applicant, but I also just wanna. I think that there's a cut, there's a consideration of precedent, but there's also a consideration of what we now have is what that is experience. And I think that we should be thinking about how those things work together, so just because it was precedent. That we um sounded an alarm about the last dispensary proposals, because we thought they were gonna create huge traffic demand, they didn't. And um it's probably likely to reason that this one won't either. Um so I just wanted to mention that, that it's something that I've been thinking about as we consider uh this this applicant. Uh and then the other thing I wanted, so anyway, it'll stop there. And I have one other thing I wanted to share.
Um, I, yeah.
The other thing I wanted to share is um. If. If the standard operating procedure uh of the way these businesses operate is something that. We're supposed to take into consideration, be accountable to in our decision to approve them. Um that is to say, uh you know, we went with the last proposal just saying. It's gonna comply with all the state laws that regulate cannabis dispensaries. And we're now being presented with these, these, these documents about them. And I have no way of judging whether these documents are compliant with state law. So I just wanted to caution us to say that, like, while it's great that all this SOP and and other. Uh you know, ways of operating are being presented to this board. I'm not taking responsibility for reviewing those and 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 indicating that they're gonna be compliant in any way.
Yeah.
And I also wanna make sure that that's clear to the public, who is is, uh I think we got a at least one uh comment about this. Um the public knows that we're not the ones assessing whether these. Prop- these proposed rules and regulations and and operating procedures are, that are presented to us are 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 compliant or adequate in any way. Because we're not.
Yeah, I think that's a really good point.
We would be first definitely happy to provide with any sort of actual state mandated and compliance, but anything like that. As well as a certificate that was provided to me, to the state for completing a compliance program. Uh that required me to be able to go through schooling, to understand the law. Around it, um how to operate and how to understand these rules and then actually put them into action, um. I would be happy to share anything from that, as well as our certificates and could also reach out to the state board myself. Uh and see if there is something that they could provide, that could provide, better, better provide. The board with uh an understanding of of really what we're required to follow in order to continue to operate. Um and they watch us very closely, we are required to submit things monthly um to the state. On a very regular basis, so um.
Thanks.
Yeah.
And what I'm saying is actually a little, almost the opposite, which is that I I think what we've, what we need to be careful about is the fact that the resolution should include that. You'd be compliant with any required, you know, laws and regulations to operate this kind of business, but we're not assessing whether your. Practices are.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask, you mind if I ask him? Are you, you certified as a micro-business or is it?
Yeah.
So, just for the board's clarification, a micro-business is a different type rather than.
A retailer.
For example, a retailer.
Yeah.
It's a much, I don't wanna say lesser, but it's. They, they are the provider of all aspects in that they are, they are growing it themselves, they are.
Restrictions and all.
Yeah, and and the micro-business is more agriculturally based. Than the other, which is strictly retail, so. It's a, it's, it's, there are much more confining regulations for them within the state regulations. In involving volume and and things like that, so.
Yeah, there is a state uh mandate, which is called the C2S system, which is a biotrack system, which requires us to track. Every single product and plant from the very moment we put it in a soil to the time we sell it to a customer, so. Um it is very intense uh to document.
Yeah.
Another thing that hasn't been found this way under the plan yet, is as far as I can tell, is a way of addressing what we all agreed was. The likely foot traffic crossing water street in that location from the opening of your parking to the entrance of the.
I do believe that the arrows uh of the entrances and exits of the building. Um and that that's in front of the covered entry there, there should be two sets of lines, um if it's not on F and I have it on red. Twenty-six point nine.
If that doesn't do anything to make that safe, that just tells us that that, that'll be, that just tells us that there'll be lots of people crossing. Very close to the main street intersection.
It, and um, uh so I I'm, I don't know whether this is a village uh DPW question.
Uh superintendent would have to sign off if the board wanted a crosswalk there. DPW would have to accept it, because with that crosswalk comes liability. So, uh I will tell you many highway superintendents and DPW superintendents are reluctant for a mid. Unless it's at a signalized intersection, either a stop sign or a light, to have a crosswalk, because there's no. Control over the situation.
Yeah, and I mean, there's, there aren't sidewalks on either side of the street, so I I really doubt they would.
I mean, perhaps a crosswalk at the intersection of Main Street might be, but it's, it's gonna be making the people go and. Beyond the reality, they're not gonna do that, they're gonna walk to the bus.
We are trying to favor everyone onto the water street, um and trying to avoid at all costs any. Pedestrian traffic crossing the corner of Main Street, um as we've witnessed several times, people tend to just come through the. Uh the green area at the corner of Water Street and Main Street and will cross adjacently to the rock sculpture, the uh. The viewpoint there, so we are trying to direct everyone with the planters in the parking lot, that they have to go from the catch basin. Area to cross the street there, so we'd love to get a recommendation from the DPW or uh whoever can advise on what's there.
I mean, the the board could certainly request of the DPW that they look at the idea of a crosswalk there and. You know, I, I don't wanna speak for them and say what his answer will be, but.
I definitely wanna recommend that, and I wanna recommend it to be further uh south. On Water Street from Main Street, because when you make a, when there's a, uh cars making a left turn on Main Street, the. I don't think that we wanna do is encourage people to be crossing Water Street immediately as the left turns are being made. So those arrows that are labeled twenty-two feet six and twenty-six nine, I think if those are meant to be people crossing. That's, I think, a much more dangerous place to encourage people to cross than further in.
Okay.
We, we definitely agree, so um.
We can.
You know, coming over at the edge of the pavers there, on the south side of the building.
Which we can add signage both on both sides of the street, at the parking lot, when you're getting out of your car. Coming out of the parking lot to cross the street and then as you exit the building to try to cross back.
Or even, you know, Rich, you had.
Yeah.
Where you have the edge of the plantar.
Mm-hmm.
Instead of just signage, some posts and. Almost gating.
Yeah.
Right.
And we are uh in the process of uh working through, we've gotten uh. Paint colors and updates to do the exteriors, we've talked through with the historical committee, they've come to see the site. Um they're happy with our color choices, so we do plan to do exterior updates and. I think make the location of that entrance a lot more clear. Um and we really took into consideration that. Uh we don't want this to be in the gateway space, um all the dispensaries in the state are required to have. Uh film covering within their windows, we've chosen a really lovely and light choice that I think just brings.
Non.
Yeah, non-reflective, uh but the reason that is the dispensary door is on the side of the building, so we're not um. Where there's no exterior signing uh above the building that is going to have something that says the weeder or anything like that, it will. Uh be inside, um and then our opening for the first three months, we are only doing a very restricted. Pre-on, pre-order online with the schedule to pick up, so that we can track the flow of traffic of every customer. And see what the community is looking like as far as how much are looking to order, so we are definitely looking at. How many people are are need to cross and uh at the flow of what they're doing, so we can go back and and work on that more.
So the last thing you mentioned is actually is something, is a procedure that we might ask for you to. To make sure we understand and might get included as a condition in the resolution. Because that is something that that does concern the board decisions, which is. How you're gonna regulate traffic and the customer flow during your opening period.
Yeah.
That, you know, as opposed to some of the other things that were about, like, how do you disregard your product or something.
Yeah, and we have a full opening case plan, um we can amend slightly to provide it so that it can be for public knowledge. Um but uh, we did wanna, we wanted to get through the site plan first, so we wanted to make sure that this makes sense before we really were showing you. This is what's happening every hour on the hour, how is that happening during our opening hours.
Uh and I do believe uh you all received a copy of the security and safety plan summary that we submitted to you. Um as well as the operational plan that has some of those details in there, maybe we can kind of uh just highlight some of the issues that you pointed out today.
Just from a a script, uh procedural point, any of the signings that you talked about in your proposal. Besides needing the location on the site plan, you should have your engineer or somebody do another sheet with. Uh sort of a mock-up of what that sign will look like, size.
Absolutely.
Yes.
That's something the board will need to see as well.
Okay. Yeah, we have that being created, so we can provide that.
Okay, uh were there any other. Uh questions from board at the time? Um. I guess, should, do we need a resolution to to refer this to the DPW and in our?
We should, the DPW and 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 the village engineer at this part. Yeah, I don't think it's ready for county planning board yet.
I think there's, there's still a number of things that uh. We wanna figure out.
And do we wanna proactively, um you said there's gonna be traffic study coming?
Yeah, and just to make sure that we are, uh there was a resolution to. Have the engineer review the plan, and we did make a fifteen hundred dollar deposit, escrow deposit for that resolution. And then there was a second resolution at the last meeting where the traffic study was decided on. But we don't know the escrow amount of that.
Yeah.
Well, there's, there's only one escrow accountant, so that's used for any um expenses that.
But for the traffic study, you would generate a traffic study and send it to us and then our traffic consultant would review it.
Right.
So to be clear, so uh the the short answer is that we should. If you've already paid the fifteen hundred escrow, if we are moving into a traffic consultant. We will be sending you a a request to up that amount, because a traffic consultant alone is usually a couple thousand dollars. But that's something Nicole and I can just internally do a memo to increase it. By the appropriate amount.
And uh just a, just a thought of, uh just from a previous applicant about. The New York State Route two ninety-nine, this is actually in the jurisdiction of the village, this is not a county.
That's was a surprise to me, but according to the New York State DOT, the section from the bridge to the light is. A village, so in that situation, the village DPW has juris. I was aware that they cloud it, but I thought it was just an agreement, and it turns out it's actually their jurisdiction. So when we refer it to DPW to look at Water Street, we can also ask him to look at. Main Street as well.
That mean that we have some, uh or could make some suggestions about the crosswalk, the cross two.
I think you make suggestions, absolutely, but still it's up to the head of the DPW whether he accepts them or not, because. He, uh in that position, he becomes responsible for A, the maintenance and B, the safety of them. And the liability of that that goes along with it, so to have. Something that is not at a signalized intersection, meaning a stoplight or a stop sign. Uh a mid-street crossing of a crosswalk, I know there's many implications, but it does. It does add concern because it's not as controlled.
Could you possibly make a crosswalk that's already existing, could you make it wider?
I don't know, but that's a good question.
Because you know how that crosswalk, it just is for the rail trail when you're crossing two ninety-nine there. But then there's this tiny piece of sidewalk that's like only a foot wide, and most people are crossing right there. Which is where what the entrance to Water Street Market is.
Right, and we looked into this too, if we were to utilize the existing crossing from the the. Rail trail, we would essentially need an easement from seven Water Street in order to cross the street there and then there, the non-existing sidewalk on. That south side of the project, um it just didn't seem like it'd make a lot of sense to have people walking there.
With no sidewalk. Without, with or without anything happening down there, if we had enough jurisdiction to make that crosswalk wider, it would be safer. Because of the fact that that it doesn't line up with the entrance to Water Street Market, and when people are crossing that are pedestrians, not bike riders.
Mm-hmm.
But people are just walking, that's where they wanna cross the street, and so they end up crossing not in the crosswalk.
Okay. Not on this plan, not shown on.
No, it's not shown on the plan, but if we. That's, I was always told, oh, you can't do that, we couldn't do that, this was the county, but now that it's village.
So I'm told, we we will confirm that, yeah.
But the county's still responsible for the crosswalk, so I, they might just not.
Uh what I could do, I don't know if the board wants to wait for the traffic study to send to DPW, or we could send, and I could draft a letter that's just asking him to review. The, the action of pedestrian crossing, both either. Water Street or both Main Street and Water Street, to just have him take a look at that for the moment. And then, when you get the traffic study, we can certainly have him look at that.
Uh yeah, I'd like to start with that and.
Yeah, cause that may dictate what the traffic study. Says too, depending on where that crossing is.
Sure.
Or if it exists.
Um but given that we already have had a resolution to refer it to.
I'm not, I think you had it, and I'm not sure, I mean, it doesn't hurt to do it again.
Okay.
If you've already done it, it's it's sort of.
Motion to confirm the resolution.
We already made these retainers, so getting the traffic. Right, so. Right, so to refer to engineer DPW and. There was a second, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Hi.
And just to clarify, the DPW, we also wanted to ask about the stormwater, right, and the gravel parking lot?
For sure.
Yeah.
Well, no, no, we're gonna have to have an engineer back.
Okay.
Yeah, well, we're starting to go, so I'll have the, I'll I'll ask the both to look at, because DPW certainly is concerned because they. They maintain that. The catch base, so.
I agree, they, yes, they are concerned, but we need somebody with the license to take a look at this.
Um are there any other steps that we can take tonight, or is that?
Do we need this type of procedure, or have we?
I think we have already done that.
Uh and we would wait until the traffic study and the recommendations from the engineer DPW to schedule a public hearing, right? Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh so I think that's all for tonight, but thank you for creating the site plan. Definitely, we're a lot further along now. Uh good to see it.
Yeah, we're just too far.
As far as updating your site plan, you may wanna, you know, not make any changes now and resubmit immediately because out of your. Traffic study, it's up to you. Uh I certainly don't need paper copies each time, uh if you wanna just have any changes and resubmit electronically. Um.
Absolutely.
No need to to.
Bring you three seventeen by twenty four.
Exactly. Uh but um. Do you think you'll you will have the traffic study before the next meeting?
That's the plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
Before the end of next week, then I can get it on the agenda, and it's not only following.
Yeah, we'll work to get that to you for the meeting.
Motion to. Wanna make sure we got a record that Nikki. Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, no, I mean.